Cameras, that's coming up.
A new bus service will make it easier to get from the San Fernando Valley to the west side. I'm Yana Kay, I'll tell you about it next.
The city's love of murals continues in the valley. We take you to this new mural that's all about vintage North Hollywood. Hello and welcome to LA this week. Thanks for joining us, I'm Ellen Chang. L.A. is about to take the national lead in making police arrests more transparent with the help of body cameras worn by police officers. Anna Marcos has more on the first phase of the city's new police camera program.
Why would a Channel 35 reporter and cameraman be caught on an LAPD camera? It's all part of the city's rollout and demo of more than 800 new on-body cameras for LAPD officers. The cameras will first go to communities with heavy police activity like the Newton Mission and Central Downtown Divisions.
What happens in Ferguson, a town not even the size of one of the police divisions in L.A., has affected us. But we're stepping up.
Recent fatal shootings by police in places like Ferguson, Missouri have sparked national debate and prompted President Barack Obama to call for police cameras. But L.A. city leaders are ahead of the game. They've been testing the cameras for more than a year. Now, as the first round of devices goes out to LAPD officers, L.A. takes the lead when it comes to transparency during police incidents.
Connecting the community and our police is perhaps the most critical thing we can do for public safety in Los Angeles.
Our country and our city are at a critical point in time as it relates to policing communities, especially communities of color.
Here's how the cameras work. As the officer approaches, he can record me as the subject and everything that I'm doing. The camera has a 130-degree radius. The cameras record both audio and video. Police say they will be used during citizen interactions and apprehensions, with exceptions, such as when police enter private homes in domestic violence or sexual abuse cases. Many believe the cameras will make confrontation safer for both citizens and officers.
And when officers and the public knows that these cameras are on, I think that it's going to change behavior.
What this allows us to do now is have the point of view from the officer and get the entire picture.
Mayor Eric Garcetti promises to commit money in the next budget in June for 7,000 more cameras, price-tagged in the millions. So within a year, every LAPD officer on patrol could be catching every move on the street live. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The first round of 800 cameras goes out on the street in early 2015, but before it happens, police are asking for public input. To give feedback regarding on-body cameras and their use, visit lapdonline.org. Commuters traveling back and forth from the valley to the west side can now cut their commute time thanks to Metro's new bus service. Yana Kay explains.
This Metro bus may just be the ticket for commuters traveling between the valley and the west side. City officials announced a new bus service that will use the newly opened 405 carpool lanes during peak commuting times.
This is a really nice service, looking forward to it.
Passengers on the bus will travel nonstop between the Sepulveda Metro Orange Line Station in Van Nuys and Westwood. The mayor says that this new service will save commuters 20 minutes each way between Westwood and the San Fernando Valley. And that adds up to a savings of 40 minutes a day, two weeks a year of commuters' valuable time.
This is express service for people who need to get to work, who want to be back with their family and have some of their life back.
Express riders will also benefit from a single transfer connection to Woodland Hills, Chatsworth, and North Hollywood. The line also will provide service along the Van Nuys Boulevard corridor to and from Arlita in the northern portion of the San Fernando Valley. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. this week.
Metro also plans to extend the line south from Westwood to the new Sepulveda Expo Line Phase 2 station when it opens in 2016 to create even greater transit connections for the west L.A. area. A changing of the guard at the largest after-school program in the state. After more than a quarter of a century as its leader, the original president of L.A.'s Best has stepped down. Gil Reyes has more on her replacement.
Students have come and gone, mayors have come and gone, but here at L.A.'s Best after-school program, one thing has remained constant, and that's President and CEO Carla Sanger, chosen to first lead the free after-school program back in 1988 by then-mayor Tom Bradley. But finally, after 26 years, Sanger is retiring, replacing her a man who compares educating kids to running a marathon.
After 26 years, which happens to be the number of miles in a marathon, coincidentally, I'm proud, honored, and excited to take the L.A.'s Best baton for my friend and mentor, Carla Sanger.
Eric Gurna will soon lead the largest nonprofit after-school program in California. In New York, he founded a similar program called Development Without Limits and had previously worked at L.A.'s Best under Sanger. Now as president, he says he will continue the tradition of patience, love, and respect for every child. L.A.'s Best serves 195 schools and 29,000 students.
L.A.'s Best quite simply is a program that works. When kids have a place to go after school, crime drops, test scores go up, our city becomes more competitive and more livable.
L.A. Mayor Eric Garcetti, whose own child is enrolled at L.A.'s Best, has touted its arts education curriculum for years. Gurna says the arts will continue to play a major role in a child's well-rounded education.
By helping them to see the joy of finding their interests and the joy of being deeply engaged.
While fostering a love for learning one step at a time. At Utah Elementary School in Los Angeles, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Eric Gurna officially takes over as President and CEO of L.A.'s Best in February. As we know, revitalization efforts in downtown have been going strong, and now those efforts are focusing in on Pershing Square as it gets ready for its own renewal. Yana Kay has more.
From first glance, Pershing Square may look pretty and inviting, but take away the fest of lights and what you'll find are concrete walls, few walkways, and no place to sit. But officials are hoping to change that by redesigning the park. A Pershing Square renew event was held recently to get community input, one of the first steps in the redesign process. Many say they want the park to be more user-friendly with grass and trees instead of uninviting rocks and cacti.
It seems like somebody must have owned a concrete developer because the whole park is what I would call a concrete jungle.
And many others agree. As it stands now, officials say the main challenge of Pershing Square is its architecture that fences and blocks people off instead of inviting them into the square. But plans are underway to redesign Pershing Square.
We want to create a space that can be used by all of those different types of people, people who live, work, play, love downtown L.A.
Officials say they want to create open space in Los Angeles that reflects the diversity of the city and the current revitalization that's taking place downtown.
Pershing Square is five acres at the very center of downtown, and it's a very important asset, so those of us that live in, for instance, old office buildings that we converted or new high-rise construction that we're doing can have a place outdoors that we can go to enjoy ourselves.
And while some improvements could take years, other short-term upgrades, like a playground already in the works, groundbreaking could begin early next spring. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. this week.
The entire project should be completed by 2020. Well, it's a birthday for an L.A. landmark that's played a critical part in L.A.'s water history. Dozens came out for a party at the Silver Lake Reservoir, but as Anna Marcos shows us, times are changing for the lake.
Hey, come on in, come on in.
It's not every day you get to celebrate your 110th birthday. The Silver Lake Reservoir, long a critical provider for the city's water supply, had plenty of visitors at its birthday bash.
If you live to be 110, that's pretty good, you deserve a birthday party.
So what does a 110th birthday cake taste like? Well, we're going to have a little taste test to see, right? Let's see. What do you think?
It's really good.
Good for breakfast, too, huh?
Because this is part of the legacy of Los Angeles, its water system.
The birthday also marks a time of change for the reservoir. It no longer meets federal regulations for clean drinking water because it's an open-air lake, so new closed-tank reservoirs have been built at Griffith Park.
From a water system standpoint, we no longer need these reservoirs to supply drinking water to the city. We are about to drain Silver Lake Reservoir and build a large pipeline that'll finish connecting the new reservoirs to the cities.
The big question for many residents is what will happen to the two lakes here, Silver Lake and Ivanhoe.
Anything that works well with the nature and the people who are living here and one that can provide access for more people and enjoyment by the kids, especially, in harmony with nature is where we're going.
Most would like to see the complex turned into a recreational area.
We're more in the spirit of collaboration with what this will look like in the not-so-distant future, which could involve parks, could involve, someday, swimming, you never know.
We also have talked about maybe doing an engineered wetlands, maybe tying it to the L.A. River. We might be able to pull L.A. River water out, run it through wetlands here.
But until that time comes, the reservoir is still normally closed to residents. For now, they can enjoy new interpretive signs and exhibits at the north end of the lake and enjoy the view. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
Currently, LADWP, which controls the property, only allows the public in for special events like this 110th birthday party. And the L.A. Aqueduct is young compared to the Silver Lake Reservoir. It also just celebrated a birthday, its 101st, with an open house.
Oh, I'm excited to be able to get this close up to see William Mulholland's gift to all of us.
The L.A. Aqueduct Cascades in Silmar stayed open to the public over a weekend, allowing folks to see what it was like 101 years ago when the city first saw water arriving from the eastern Sierra through William Mulholland's engineering marvel.
Well, I think it gives us some electricity and provides us water.
LADWP staff are on hand to answer questions about the history of the aqueduct and to shed light on how the aqueduct has contributed to the growth and prosperity of the city.
We're standing in front of the Los Angeles Aqueduct Cascades. We have them open and flowing water today and tomorrow so that the public can see how some of their water arrives in Los Angeles from the Owens Valley.
But with knowledge comes great responsibility, as the saying goes. Due to this year's drought, visitors are learning that our city received the lowest amount of water in the city's history from the eastern Sierra. In a more typical year, the city receives 20% to 50% of its water supply from the eastern Sierra.
We're enjoying it 100 years later, 101 years later.
More than a century later, Angelenos are learning how to take the water but also how to conserve it, at a time when water conservation is at the top of the city's priority list. The Cascades in Silmar first opened to visitors last year for its centennial celebration, and due to the response, LADWP may consider opening it up again on its 102nd birthday. Several council members are up for reelection, and the Los Angeles City Clerk is hitting the ground running ahead of the 2015 municipal elections. Yana Kay has more.
These Angelenos are exercising their right to vote, but not everyone goes to the polls, so the city clerk has kicked off its "Get Out the Vote" campaign.
Our key mission is for people to know that there's an election, to register people to vote.
Officials and community partner organizations gathered at City Hall for a voter outreach and education event. They say the goal was to encourage everyone to vote for the upcoming 2015 municipal elections, and they made sure that all voters in the city have equal access to the necessary information by passing out materials in 11 languages. This comes as a number of states are trying to pass laws that would restrict advancements made in the voting process, such as voting by mail or early voting.
It is really important to come out to vote because there are a lot of people who are looking to take away that vote, and we shouldn't let that cynicism overcome us.
Community groups were out in full force, not only encouraging everyone to vote but to go even further.
Not to stop there, to become civically engaged in their communities, make their opinions known to their elected representatives, join with others in community organizations that advocate for the issues that they believe in.
The municipal elections take place on March 3rd and May 19th, 2015. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. this week.
By the way, if your language is not one of the 11 offered, the city clerk offers translation services in any language. One area of Sherman Oaks, which now lies in Councilmember Tom Labonge's district, has seen plenty of changes lately. The latest is a street makeover for what can often be a busy and unsafe street. Anna Marcos takes us to the groundbreaking.
This section of Moore Park Street in Sherman Oaks can be a bit of a nightmare for both traffic and pedestrians. It only has two lanes of traffic. In many places, there is no curb or sidewalk, and often what sidewalks there are jog in and out. But all that is about to change as the area gets a little rehab.
We'll have two lanes in the westbound, and we'll have one lane in the eastbound, and we'll have parking and we'll have a nice buffer between the curb and the driver. So it's going to be a much safer experience.
And it'll be safer for disabled pedestrians as well. City leaders plan to put in seven accessible curb ramps in places like this that don't have it, much like the one you see behind me.
Additional perks include more trees and better lighting and sidewalks. Drainage will be improved with new catch basins added.
The good thing is, is hopefully some of the carts will slow down, and you know, all the people walking from all of the businesses in the area, they'll have a sidewalk to walk on, and most of Moore Park, so you know, we're happy about that.
Councilmember Tom Labonge, who inherited the area through redistricting, helped push the $1.7 million project through, and many residents are happy with the changes they see.
During the time he's been here, he has been responsible for a lot of public works. There's been reef surfacing of streets, there's been stop signs, there've been trees trimmed...
The people of Sherman Oaks, they tell you what they want, then you try to deliver. Our job is to listen and try to deliver for the people.
Meanwhile, Labonge is wearing his orange safety jacket as he gets to work on yet another public works improvement project. Construction should begin in January and is scheduled to be completed by the end of next year. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
City employees were treated to a barbecue recently as Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell and his staff fired up the grill and served up some good eats, all to thank the city's tireless workers. Yana Kay has more.
One of the best burgers I've had in a long time.
And that was certainly the consensus among these L.A. city employees who came out to enjoy Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell's City Employee Appreciation BBQ Luncheon. What did you eat?
Just now, I had a hamburger and a hot dog, both.
And a hot dog, so how was it?
It was excellent.
Councilmember O'Farrell says this inaugural barbecue is a way for him to show his gratitude to officers, animal control, those who work in City Hall, and those who pave our streets for all of their hard work.
I feel that I owe it to the city family to say thank you, and this is my way of doing it.
It makes you feel appreciated, especially, you know, I've been here since the whole, you know, recession and the crisis and furlough, so it's actually a very special thing. We have nothing like this happening in a long time.
And it was definitely a full house, as folks enjoyed the beautiful surroundings of the Grace Simmons Lodge in Elysian Park and each other's company.
We get to know people that we've never met, city's so big, so it's nice to get to mingle with people.
Councilmember O'Farrell says he plans on hosting a barbecue like this every year for city employees. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. this week.
Of those thanked at the barbecue were, of course, police officers who often put their lives in danger to serve the city. Recently, the LAPD gathered to honor the very first motorcycle officer to die in the line of duty. Michael McManus reports.
(singing) And the road gets red. LAPD motor officers follow a proud tradition of being a highly-trained, specialized unit. This ceremony was to honor the first motor officer who died in the line of duty, Walter R. Kreps. He died March 28, 1916, in a collision with another police vehicle while responding to a call. At this ceremony, he was honored with a memorial plaque at his gravesite at Angeles-Rose Dale Cemetery. Today, in collaboration with the Los Angeles Police Memorial Foundation, the Los Angeles Police Department will unveil and present Officer Kreps with the gravestone he deserved. Family members participated, as Officer Kreps was also honored with a memorial street sign.
The LAPD conducts research for all of the officers who were killed in the line of duty, because we have a promise, we've made a promise and a pledge, never to forget, and today is evidence of that promise.
Michael McManus reporting for L.A. this week. (singing) Brave.
Many motor officers have had distinguished careers with the LAPD. The first motor officer to rise to the position of Chief of Police is current Chief Charlie Beck. Another parent held responsible after a child takes a gun out of the home. The public is asked to help in a hit-and-run case and a new pocket park in West Adams Heights. These stories in City Beat. For the second time this fall, the L.A. City Attorney's Office has filed criminal charges against a parent after his child took a weapon from home. In this latest incident, which occurred in September, the City Attorney's Office says a 14-year-old boy took a loaded gun from his parents' bedroom and threatened some kids with it.
He allegedly displayed by opening up his shirt and showing that the weapon was tucked into his pants. He allegedly showed the kids that he had that weapon, and that led those other children to disperse. Every parent needs to safely store their weapon. Indeed, every adult needs to safely store their weapon.
The boy's father, 54-year-old Santiago Chavez, faces multiple criminal charges related to the incident and could even lose the right to possess weapons in the future. Councilmember Bernard Parks's office is joining with the LAPD in offering a $50,000 reward for help in identifying the hit-and-run driver who killed pedestrian Diane Dupree Phillips. It happened on October 10 at around 9:40 p.m. on Crenshaw Boulevard near 63rd Street.
She was a person that would love to go out and help anyone that she could, and we're just asking for the public help.
Someone knows something about this incident either as an eyewitness or also as knowledge after the fact. They may have a piece of the puzzle.
A nearby camera captured the hit-and-run incident. Police say the vehicle is likely a small-to-medium-sized 1980s to early 1990s Honda, Toyota, or similar vehicle. A blighted residential lot in the historical neighborhood of West Adams Heights in Council District 10 has been transformed into new green space. The new mini-park at 1903 Cordova Street features children's play equipment, an outdoor fitness zone, shaded gathering space, a walking path, and sustainable landscaping. The final design took into account the community's vision. It was once a dirt lot, but now it's been transformed into a gathering space named in honor of a late community activist. Yana Kay has more.
Jessica Bravo's 15-month-old son Bentley is full of energy and certainly keeps his mom on her toes. But now that there's a new park near their house, she's thrilled that the little guy will have a place to run around.
Well, we live on Vineyard, which is just two and a half blocks from here, so we're really excited to have somewhere to come out and get the wiggles out.
Jessica is one of the 7,000 residents that live close to the new West Adams Neighborhood Park, and many of them, along with other community members, came to celebrate its grand opening.
I think it's great that they're opening more parks, and it's so nice to have a place for the community to get together and meet other moms that live nearby and have a place for my kid to play.
The park features a children's play area, fitness equipment, native landscaping, and picnic space. One of the unique features about this new park is this metal sunshade, which incorporates positive messages written by local schoolkids. This is the 26th new park to open under the city's 50 Parks Initiative, an effort by the Department of Recreation and Parks to provide more open space in areas that need it the most.
It's not just about building parks willy-nilly, it's about putting the parks where the people are.
The park was named in honor of current City Council President's late mother Gladys Wesson, who passed away in 2011. She was a longtime community activist who advocated for senior citizens and young people.
If you knew my mother, you knew that she was all about love.
The project was made possible through a collaboration between Council District 10, the West Adams Neighborhood Council, and the Los Angeles Neighborhood Initiative.
We were right on board with immediately thinking of this site because this whole area just reflects the diversity of our city.
And now this diverse neighborhood will have an open space to relax and unwind in its own backyard. I'm Yana Kay for L.A. this week.
This is the 26th new park to open under the city's 50 Parks Initiative, an effort by the Department of Recreation and Parks to provide more open space in areas that need it the most. In this week's List of Things to Do, one of the most comprehensive collections of Samurai armor on display. Andy Warhol Shadows on exhibit. And don't know where to eat lunch downtown? We'll tell you about lunch trucks in the park. Travel back in time and discover remarkable objects that illuminate the life, culture, and pageantry of the Samurai, the revered and feared warriors of Japan. The Anne and Gabriel Barbie Mueller Collection, one of the finest and most comprehensive collections of Samurai armor in the world, is on display at the Los Angeles County Museum of Art. A 50-minute tour, free with admission, is being offered on Saturday, January 10 at 10:30 a.m. The exhibition illustrates the evolution of Samurai equipment through the 12th and 19th centuries, featuring more than 140 objects of warrior regalia with full suits of armor, helmets, and faceguards, weapons, horse trappings, and other battle gear. Lacma is located at 5905 Woolshire Boulevard. Go to lacma.org. And for another exhibit to visit in the new year, check out the Andy Warhol Shadows exhibit at Moca Grand Avenue, open through February 15. In 1978 to 1979, Andy Warhol produced Shadows, a monumental 102-part series of silk-screened canvases conceived as one work in multiple parts. The series of abstract panels ranging in hue from an electric green to a somber brown create a haunting environmental ensemble. Moca's presentation will feature the full collection of paintings from DIA Art Foundation installed edge to edge. Moca Grand Avenue is located at 250 South Grand Avenue. Go to moca.org. And on Wednesday, January 14, come into the sunshine and enjoy everyone's favorite time of the workday, the mighty lunch at the Lunch à la Park event at Grand Park, L.A. Downtown. Food trucks will be parked on Olive Courts between Grand and Hill at 200 North Grand Avenue and the marketplace between Spring and Broadway in front of City Hall. Trucks will be out from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m. The Lunch à la Park event takes place every Wednesday and Thursday at Grand Park, L.A. Go to grandparkla.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. Recently, what has been an eyesore in North Hollywood has been turned into a great example of public art. Michael McManus reports.
The mural is in a part of North Hollywood known as the Witsit Slope, located at the corner of Witsit and Saticoi. The slope had been gathering weeds and graffiti for years until many parts of the community came together with the help of Council District 2.
In 2011, we started working on this. 2012 is when things really got going with the first cleanup. We then, in 2013, put in drought-resistant irrigated plants here. We cleaned up the slope many different times, but there was still this concrete slab that was 9,000-foot slab of concrete, and Council District 2 said, "We need a mural there. We need more public art in the San Fernando Valley, and this is a great place to do it." So that's what happened after many years of hard work.
The theme of the mural is vintage North Hollywood, showing its agricultural roots, and then some of the iconic businesses through past decades. The raw numbers are rather amazing. The slope is 240 feet long and 40 feet wide, and it's made up of 9,000 square feet of concrete. The mural took 10,000 gallons of paint. Levi Ponce was the lead artist.
I'll just say that this is a great example of what can happen when individuals come together to change their neighborhood. It's a great example of what happens when artists, local departments like the Department of Public Works, the Department of Cultural Affairs, or the Public of Transportation, when they all come together, we can create positive changes in our community.
One of the fun features of the mural is a depiction of the Cadillac customized by North Hollywood costume designer Nudie Cohen. For the ribbon cutting, the real deal was on display and proved it can still draw a crowd. Michael McManus reporting.
And in case you're wondering, the artwork has been protected from graffiti, but if people want to walk on it and experience it up close and personal, that's okay. That's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us, I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at ellicityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. Our Twitter handle is @L A T W 35. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
Hi, I'm Shannon Lamerk Park. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Please welcome Corin Price to the center podium.
Thank you, Kenny.
We are soon going to be celebrating the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. A number of activities are being planned around our city and around our country. Here in Los Angeles, we're pleased that the Southern Christian Leadership Conference has taken some leadership in advancing these issues and causes in our community. They've joined us today, the president, Pastor William Smart, and board members. Why don't you join me, members? And, Mr. President, I'd like for President Smart to just give us some comments on upcoming activities and events.
Thank you very much, Mr. Price.
Thank you, Councilman Price, and to the distinguished members of this city council. This is an exciting time because we do recognize the life and the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King. We have a broad-based coalition working with us, and we're having types of events from social conscious prayers to plays to conversations with the Jewish community at the Jewish temple. We are also having our major, we're bringing back our major dinner this year on January 19th. We invite all of you to come on the night of Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday. That will be at the Sheraton Gateway Hotel. This year, what we're really trying to do is to bring together the city around the legacy of Dr. King at a time when we're celebrating the 50th year of the Voting Rights Act of 1965, and we're still seeing the disenfranchisement that took place 50 years ago. So, SCLC of Southern California, we are back doing the things that Dr. Martin Luther King has done. All of you, if you haven't, please go see the movie Selma. In that movie, it shows, in a big historical way, the work of SCLC, the work of Dr. Martin Luther King, and why we celebrate his birthday. Thank you, Mr. LeBanc, so much. And I have to say, I mean, I don't want to pull any, I mean, be the first one, but I want to give honor and due to Maria Linda, one of my mentors.
Thank you very much. Very nice.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Mr. Price. Mr. O'Farrell from the 13th District. And as you come up, come up slow, Mitch. Come up slow.
One of the Freedom Riders. She's with us. She's being honored at our dinner.
Peggy. Good to see you, Peggy. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Esteemed colleagues, I am honored to stand here today alongside former councilwoman Jan Perry. How about a big round of applause for Jan Perry? We extend our sincere appreciation to one of our beloved colleagues, trusted confidants, and font of knowledge on all issues related to planning, otherwise known as Marie Rumsey. Marie began her career with the City of Los Angeles in 2001 as Senior Deputy for the Office of Jan Perry, the 9th Council District. Marie worked on issues related to planning, economic development, and housing. She successfully brought new resources to South Los Angeles, including many affordable housing projects and grocery stores, and worked on some of the most exciting new developments in downtown Los Angeles. Marie's other accomplishments and achievements as Senior Deputy for Councilwoman Perry include the development and completion of the University of Southern California specific plan.
Fight on.
And I heard, no small feat, indeed, as well as the redevelopment of the Wilshire Grand Hotel and related entitlements, and the renovation and modernization of the Convention Center and Event Center project. After serving for 12 years under Councilwoman Perry, in July, upon taking office, I was incredibly privileged that Marie joined my office as Planning Director, serving the many dynamic neighborhoods of the 13th Council District. And as many of you know, a lot of things happen in the 13th. Marie reveals to all of us unwittingly, I think, on how much we all have yet to learn about the city and about planning and about issues. She has a very calming effect with everyone she's around, and Marie is really known for just cutting to the heart of the matter and making things happen, which is my mantra. Marie's many accomplishments and achievements as my Planning Director include completing the Echo Park Hike District Reduction, the 1L hike district reduction, assisting in the development and release of the Wilcox Schrader Request for Proposals for 100% Affordable Housing in the Heart of Hollywood, and developing new standards for revocable permits on the Hollywood Walk of Fame with the Bureau of Engineering and Hollywood Historic Trust. Marie was also the lead architect in drafting a citywide policy that we adopted, requiring proper notification to demolish buildings older than 45 years anywhere across the city, providing neighbors with an opportunity to know firsthand about what is being proposed in their communities. Marie has been involved in a wide array of community service. She currently serves as Board Member for the American Planning Association in the Los Angeles Chapter of the American Institute of Architects in Los Angeles. Marie has mastered the art of political messaging with her indisputable mantra, pivot to the positive. Pivot to the positive. What great advice is that, and I need to hear that all the time? And other great one-liners, some of them a little more colorful. She has enriched the lives of thousands of residents in the City of Los Angeles with over 13 years of experience working in the political and government arena. The milestones and accomplishments of her career have been many and are a testament of her knowledge, intellect, ethical core, and hard work. Before we have Marie come forward to say a few words, I would like to introduce our esteemed colleague, Jan Perry.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate the opportunity to make some comments about Marie. I've known Marie for a very long time. We started out, Marie was my fundraiser in my first campaign, and she was so good, I didn't want to let her go. And Marie was, still is, a young woman, but much younger, and I have had the privilege of watching her grow, evolve, find her voice, become a mother, become a wife. I've had the privilege of knowing her entire family. She is relentless in the pursuit of intelligent solutions to better communities. What I liked about Marie, that as a staff person, she spoke out, she challenged, she argued, and ultimately, ultimately, she came out, we came out with a better product, a better deliverable for the community that we served. And when I turned out last year, I was sad, sad, because so many of the people, we had been together for so long, some even longer than the 12 years, but I was comforted by the fact that Marie was going to continue to be in City Hall and that Councilman O'Farrell was able to hire her. And so, Marie, I'm really pleased to stand here as you go on to the next phase of your life with CCA and Carol Schatz. I want to say congratulations, and congratulations to Carol, too. You are...
Oh, really?
Yeah. You didn't know?
No, no.
Oh, sorry, okay. All right, well, anyway. To celebrate you as you go on to this next phase of your life, and to know that we'll still be friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Thank you so much. So, Marie doesn't just say farewell to the 13th District, she says farewell to colleagues in my office that really admire and love her. We're all a little heartsick, but we also are very thrilled for you that you're moving on. Although you will be missed, you won't be too far or distant of these halls, Marie has joined Central City Association of Los Angeles as a Director of Government. Now, we have Carol Schatz, President and CEO of CCA, to say a few words. Carol?
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here and tell you how delighted I am that Marie has joined Central City Association. She is someone, as you all know and you have heard from those who have worked very closely with her, what an intelligent, thoughtful, expert she is on so many things, city. Her land use background in particular is extremely important to us downtown, right, Jose? Because the revitalization of downtown, which she has been an integral part of due to the wonderful work of our former Councilmember Jan Perry, is largely a real estate story. And it's extremely important, and we are going like gangbusters, as you know, and we intend to keep that going because it is lifting the entire city up. I think you all know that. And there is no better person to help us continue with that momentum than somebody who was there at the very beginning, when the phone did not ring. For 10 years at CCA, the phone did not ring, and now it is ringing off the hook, and that is the wonderful news, and she's going to help carry that mantle forward. I couldn't be more delighted, and she's not far away. So, Marie, it's my pleasure to welcome you to us, and...
Okay, well, I just, I want to say thank you to Councilmember O'Farrell and to Councilmember Perry, and of course, to Carol. Working at City Hall has been an absolutely amazing experience. I enjoyed every minute of it. This is a great place to work for those of you who are newer, who are just, you know, starting out. Enjoy yourself here, learn as much as you can, make friends, treat each other well, and remember that you're here to help folks. So, thank you, everybody, very much, and I appreciate this.
Thank you, Marie.
It is with incredible pride and gratitude of Marie's exceptional contributions to the City of Los Angeles and residents everywhere, the 9th, and the 13th, and beyond, that we present this resolution thanking her for over 13 years of service to the City of LA and wish her well moving forward. Thank you so much, Marie, may God bless.
Another big hand for Marie Rumsey. Give her a big hand. Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. As they depart the podium, Madam Clerk, I believe this is the time, let's, please call the roll.
Bloomingfeld, Bonin, Busciano, Sedia, Englander, Fuentes, Wezar, Caress, Corcoran, Labonge, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson, 10 members present, I call Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Fuentes moves, Mr. Sedia seconds.
Next is committed to resolutions for approval.
Mr. Bonin moves, and Mrs. Bloomingfeld seconds.
Mr. President, there's requests to continue Item 1C to January 27th, Item 2 to January 16th, and Item 3 to January 14th.
So ordered.
Item 1 is an item known as for public hearing. The Department of Building and Safety reports that Items 1F, H, I, and J may be received and filed inasmuch as the liens have been paid.
So ordered.
And there is a card on this item.
All right, let me call that item, and we get that card right now. Mr. Walsh.
Appreciate, Mr. Labonge doesn't criticize me for walking slowly, I'm 71 years old, the way the black man does to me. HollywoodHighlands.org, Jay Walsh Confidential, at Hollywood Dems. This issue, again, this is number one, hearing protester appeals to Building and Safety Department. Now, anybody who's a regular watcher of this knows that if any time you get, here's one, West McNolia, $1,555, you get any of these things in the mail, they just mail it to you, they don't send it to you registered mail. You might not get it, and then all of a sudden, they're attaching your property. You come down here, you talk to us, we tell you how, brief you on how to speak in front of the City Council, and every single time this happens, you people out there who watch this, no, the City Councilman's deputy is brought in, it has stopped the money, and none of them ever come back after they complain. Why don't they ever come back? Because the fine is lifted. If you come down here and speak and protest your fine, the fine will be lifted because they're baseless fines. The people who work in building and safety on these fines, they don't know what they're talking about. HollywoodHighlands.org.
That completes the card and the public comment on that, Madam Clerk? Should we vote on that? All right, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next item.
Item 4 is an item which public hearing has not been held, 10 votes required for consideration.
We'll consider that vote, okay? Without objection? And you want to lay it on the desk and come back to it?
Yes, Mr. President, I believe there's a card for that item.
Keep going through the agenda.
Mr. President, that takes Council back to presentations.
Very good. Let's ask the great Councilman of the New 9th to continue in his presentation, Mr. Corrin Price.
Thank you, Mr. President, members. We rarely get an opportunity to honor and pay homage to all the incredible contributions that our law enforcement individuals make every day in efforts to keep our community safe. Even more remarkable is when you find a police officer who can do his job well and develop great relationships with the community. Well, it's my honor today to recognize a man who encompasses all of that and more. Officer Mike Fernandez has served our city well in more than 16 years with the Los Angeles Police Department. Mike, come on up. And the team, that's right, get the whole team up here. Mike, as I mentioned, has been an officer for more than 16 years. For more than half that time, he's held the important title of Senior Lead Officer, which, of course, our colleague Councilman Busciano knows well. It's a difficult job to hold. But what makes him so impressive is that, and what's earned him the respect from his colleagues, is indicated by receiving the 2013 LAPD Senior Lead Officer of the Year Award, underscoring his ability to serve others. Serving in the Newton Division, Officer Fernandez never hesitates in assisting his fellow officers, and he's been instrumental in formulating action plans to combat blight in our community. In his area of responsibility encompasses the Pueblo de Rio housing projects, which traditionally have been some of our most crime-ridden areas. Yet Officer Fernandez has managed to forge trust with the residents, gaining collaboration from all stakeholders to improve the quality of life in this area. Officer Fernandez was also key in helping to open the Alba Center, which is used as a center for police activities and police athletic league activities, and it benefits hundreds, literally hundreds and hundreds of kids in the community. And if that weren't enough, he and several of his colleagues are also involved in putting together other important community outreach events, like collecting turkeys, passing out turkeys, distributing toys during the holiday seasons, and we just appreciate all of their efforts. But it's truly a pleasure to watch the public servant interacting with youth and families in our community. And I want to just again thank Officer Mike Fernandez for his commitment, for his service, and for his willingness to give more than is required. He's always a step ahead. Officer, we appreciate you, keep up the good work, congratulations. Mr. President, without objection, can Officer Fernandez just say a few words?
He can say as much as he wants.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Everything that we do, obviously, we don't do by ourselves. We do it, here's my team behind me, there are my family, my friends, my colleagues, my classmates from school. It'd be too many people to name, I know we're pressed for time, from what I was told. I just want to say thank you very much, this is an honor for me, and look forward to coming back in the future and doing more positive stuff.
Thank you very much. Big hand to Newton Division, Officer Fernandez. Another hand for Officer Fernandez from Newton Division. Thank you. Now, I'd like to call on the fine Councilman of the 5th District, a graduate of Hamilton High School, and who's been involved since his days at Hammy. I see, along with the city attorney and the city controller, Mr. Fear and Mr. Galperin, thank you.
Well, I'm delighted today to welcome Marielena Durazo, so we might honor her right here in the City Council chambers. And there are many other special guests here, but for this presentation, I think there are too many for me to mention everyone, but I do want to thank everyone who's come here to celebrate Marielena's career. And I want to make particular mention of her sons, Michael Contreras and Mario Salazar, her daughter-in-law, Sandy Salazar, grandkids, Seneca and Sidney. And I also want to recognize the gentleman who's taking over Marielena's post as Executive Secretary of the LA County Federation of Labor, Rusty Hicks. We had the pleasure of honoring Rusty before he began a one-year deployment in Afghanistan, where he's been well decorated for his service there. Now, of course, Marielena is the hero we're honoring today, but first, let's give another big hand for Rusty and for Marielena's family. Not only is Marielena a tremendous champion for the critical causes and benefits to countless working people and their families and communities, but she's also a great American success story. She was the seventh of 11 children in a migrant family, and so she and the rest of her family traveled around California and Oregon, going wherever crops and work might be found. She witnessed and learned firsthand about the harsh, backbreaking conditions in the fields, what it meant to survive when there's only meager pay and no security, often no bathrooms in the field, no fresh water, little shelter, little if any access to proper medical care, and the young and female often suffering particularly demeaning and crassly exploitive conditions. I wouldn't wish those working conditions on anyone, but I'm so proud that Marielena emerged as such a giant, a titan, and a sterling advocate for those who labor under those kinds of hardships. She attended and graduated St. Mary's College, she became involved in the Chicano Movement, and in turn became an organizer for the International Ladies Garment Workers Union, now known as Unite, the Union of Needle Trades, Industrial and Textile. Union, now known as Unite, the Union of Needle Trades Industrial and Textile Employees. Later, she joined the Hotel Employees and Restaurant Employees Local Eleven, where she led an organizing drive that helped educate workers about their rights and empowered them to participate in union contract negotiations, and made union meetings and publications bilingual. Even while she was making such a difference for those who, uh, uh, she assisted among the workers, she was studying at People's College of Law and earned her degree in nineteen eighty-five. It was while she was at Local Eleven that she met another union activist, Miguel Contreras, who she married in nineteen eighty-eight. A year later, Maria Elena was elected president of Local Eleven, a position that she would hold for seventeen years until two thousand six. And she defeated a, a man named Scotty Allen, and I first met Scotty Allen in nineteen fifty-eight because this was my father's union. He was, he was a waiter and, and, uh, a rank-and-file active member at, uh, their annual holiday party, and I remember him patting me on the head and giving me, uh, a little stocking with some gifts. And the thing that was the most amazing was not Maria Elena's election in nineteen eighty-nine, it was that this guy was still around. Um, I, I, I think it was a somewhat fossilized leadership, and this was a complete turnaround, and it became a, a very active force, uh, as Local Eleven. In two thousand three, Maria Elena became National Director of the Immigrant Workers' Freedom Ride. In two thousand four, she was elected Executive Vice President of Unite Here International. And meanwhile, Miguel Contreras was elected Executive Secretary-Treasurer of the County Fed, a post that he held until his tragic sudden passing in two thousand five, and he will forever be missed. In May two thousand six, Maria Elena was elected to the same position that her husband had held, and in two thousand ten, she was re-elected. Now, this is one hugely important job, as we know, since the county fed represents eight hundred thousand workers, uh, more than three hundred separate unions, but what is absolutely vividly obvious is that Maria Elena was always determined, always caring, whether it was to help one person, one family, one union local, one community, one city, the vast spectrum of unions serving working families, or the entire nation, she's always been there to, to help, to serve, and to lead and give it her all. And Miguel and Maria Elena together molded the L.A. County Fed into the strongest local labor movement in the country. She's also Vice President of the National AFL-CIO Executive Council. She was Vice Chair to the Two Thousand Eight Democratic National Convention Committee, National Co-Chair for the Obama Presidential Campaigns in two thousand eight and two thousand twelve. She's served on commissions under multiple mayors of the city of Los Angeles, and the local, uh, uh, alliance, the Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy, or LANE, sits on the Board of Directors of the L.A. Tourism and Convention Board, and so many more things. And now she's taken on a brave, new, amazing role as the Vice President for Immigration, Civil Rights, and Diversity at Unite Here, at a time when the whole meaning of what it means to be an immigrant in this country is once again taking on a bright new promise. Uh, and so it's, uh, my honor to, uh, help to honor her today, and, uh, now I'd like to ask, uh, our city attorney, Mike Fewer, to share his thoughts as well.
Thank you very much, Paul, Mr. President, members of the city council. Uh, as they write the history of the city of Los Angeles, there will be a chapter devoted to Maria Elena Durazo. Determined, focused, effective, dynamic, inspiring, those are just some of the words that people use when they attribute to Maria Elena, the array of qualities that make someone the best of leaders. I have had the privilege of seeing Maria Elena in many contexts, but the setting, I think, that most exemplifies her impact on our city and on working people is when I see her with workers themselves. She lifts them up. She gives them the accurate feeling that they can change the world, that they can improve life for themselves and for their families. The word empowerment is overused in our society and in politics, but Maria Elena has succeeded in empowering a generation of workers to believe, to have hope, and then to take those values and translate them into action that improves people's lives. It continues to be a pleasure to have the opportunity to interact with one of the most significant leaders on behalf of working people in the United States. And as Councilmember Corretts indicated, Maria Elena is taking those talents to the next level, to be active at a national stage when it comes to a defining moment in our nation's history, and that is identifying a path for meaningful immigration reform that doesn't end with the president's executive action, but begins with it. So on behalf of those of us in the city attorney's office and all of us in Los Angeles, I wanted to take just a moment this morning to say to Maria Elena Durazo, uh, there are hundreds of thousands, perhaps millions of people in our community who will always be in your debt, and while you are going on to a next chapter in your extraordinary life, you will always be a central figure here in the city of Los Angeles. And as Paul mentioned, uh, to Rusty Hicks, uh, you are assuming a role that Maria Elena has elevated to the next level, and as they say in many traditions, from strength to strength. All of us wish you a great deal of luck and success in a job that is essential to all of us in the city of Los Angeles, from business to working people. So, Mr. President, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Mr. Corretts, thank you for bringing this motion forward, and I'll turn things back over to you.
Well, thank you, Mike. Now I'd like to call on the City Controller, Ron Galprin, for some comments.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Council President, council, especially councilmembers Corretts and Sadio and Wezar for inviting me to join this morning in recognizing one of L.A.'s most prominent leaders. Now, here in Los Angeles, we have a few select people that we know by just their first name and their first name only. Cher Madonna Sting Liberace.
Ron.
And when you mention these people's names, you know immediately who you are talking about. If I say Oprah, everybody knows who we're talking about. And what that tells you is that they have distinguished themselves to such an extent that their names are synonymous with their achievements. Well, today, we're here to honor and celebrate a woman whose name, actually two names, is in fact synonymous with her achievements. And whenever you mention the name Maria Elena, you know exactly who it is that we're talking about. And if you walk into a city hall office and say, "Maria Elena would like to discuss a particular issue," everyone knows who you're talking about, and by the way, they're gonna take that meeting. Now, Maria Elena Durazo is devoted to working people and is a powerhouse at it. From her days at Unite Here Local Eleven, she dedicated her life to working people to ensure that the work that they do is justly compensated in a society that is too often marred by inequality. She's also devoted her life to the rights of immigrants. It's a subject that's near and dear to my heart. Both of my parents are immigrants to the United States. They came here seeking what every immigrant does, which is a better life and a fair chance. And what she has done is champion that every person should get that kind of a fair chance and a fair shake. And those of us whose parents came here, as well as those who have been here for generations, can take heart that Maria Elena is becoming VP of Immigration, Civil Rights, and Diversity at Unite Here. And in some ways, that change, that evolution, really marks a return to Maria Elena's roots. Maria Elena is also devoted to getting things done. She never met a businessperson she wouldn't sit down with at the table, and of course, as our council president has said recently, she also never left that table empty-handed. But the key thing to know about her is that she understands the value, and she has this incredible ability to build alliances. And Maria Elena is devoted to civil rights. She was among the first labor leaders in this country to state unequivocally that everyone should be treated equally under the law regardless of who they love. "The working men and women in this country," she said, "are united in strong opposition to Prop. Eight." She stated it loudly and without hesitation, and when the Supreme Court struck down the vile Prop. Eight and other discriminatory measures that branded same-sex couples as criminals, she cheered as loud as anyone. We honor and thank you, Maria Elena, and we're also very much looking forward to the great work that we know that Rusty Hicks is going to be doing, but I look forward very much to seeing the next chapters that Maria Elena, that you are going to be writing, and the great work that you will continue to do, not only in Los Angeles, but nationwide. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be a small part of honoring this great woman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Corretts, we do have some colleagues here. May I call on them now?
Now I'd like to, uh, hear from a couple, uh, council colleagues who are also former cellmates, um, since we all were arrested working with, uh, Local Eleven and, uh, Maria Elena in a protest on Century Boulevard, and we've actually all gone on since to become councilmembers. Uh, first, uh, councilmember Jose Wezar.
Thank you very much. Things that Maria Elena Durazo makes us do. But, uh, I'm, uh, here not only as a friend to Maria Elena and to congratulate her and to thank her on behalf of the city, but also, uh, as a fourteenth council constituent. I could say that, uh, she hasn't called for many things, uh, but this last Halloween, I have, uh, we celebrated on the block the Halloween celebrations, and it's a great event to the fourteenth council district, and I think she was, you know, seemed to see if I was gonna go, and I'm like, okay, she wants me to stop by her house and say hello, so I thought it was gonna be some business or something, but as I was leaving, she finally asked for something. It was a side street next to your house that would get repaid fairly soon.
I tried with every other city council member.
We're gonna do it. Uh, but seriously, we, um, I, uh, as I look at Maria Elena Durazo and her stewardship of the County Federation of Labor here in the area, she has overseen, I think, in putting together one of the most complicated issues that labor and immigrant rights activists have experienced. Historically, labor wasn't always on the same page as immigrant rights, and as complicated as getting them on the same page on the same issues as it was, Maria Elena Durazo made that seem so smooth in the last few years here in the county of Los Angeles. Now, as we look at working families in Los Angeles, the work they're doing, the work that immigrant rights, uh, activists are doing, it's all in the same, and we're all working for a better life for all of us in the county of Los Angeles. Uh, I also want to acknowledge her wonderful, beautiful family, uh, that, uh, there's a lot of love in the family, as you see them, uh, a family that, uh, uh, often is a lot of events, and, uh, they have been part of the struggle along with Maria Elena Durazo. They've been there. Uh, I want to acknowledge her beautiful family again and all you've done to support the work, because you've been there as well with Maria Elena Durazo and doing the work she does, so congratulations to you and thank you to you for all the work you've done as well. And last but not least, I, I want to end by saying that we will pave that seat, that, that street, uh, but also, uh, you know, it was great to have a national figure here in Los Angeles pushing national issues, and now, uh, having her make that impact here in Los Angeles, someone, as our city attorney said, there will be a chapter on Maria Elena Durazo when we write the history of the city of Los Angeles. Felicidades adelante mujer.
Thank you, Jose. And now I'd like to ask my other Century Boulevard, uh, cellmate, Gilbert Sadio, a former labor leader in his own right to speak as well. Thank you.
I resemble that. So let me, uh, let me tell you our story. Uh, it's true, there is, there are those people who are identified simply by their, their name. Um, and so it's interesting because they just put Maria Elena, it's like it's just one word. And, uh, I remember when we met. We were young students, uh, it was late sixties, early seventies, we were college students, and there was this network of students throughout the state who were interested in being pro-immigrant and being pro-labor, and it made sense. Uh, our parents were immigrants, our grandparents were immigrants, and they were workers. And so those were the values that we took with us when we went to the university. Uh, we were the minority students at the time. Uh, we were the dreamers of that era. Uh, we were small groups of students, Saint Mary's, UCLA, Berkeley, Cal State LA, Long Beach, San Diego. Uh, we had a network of young people that came from the same backgrounds and had the same values. Uh, we even had, uh, friends in Oregon and Illinois, other people who became, went on to become prominent leaders, and we were shaped by those times. Uh, we were part of an organization that was called GASA, and there's, uh, many prominent leaders in this city today, throughout this city, who were with us during that time period. Former mayor is one, there's a lot of lawyers, uh, a lot of union leaders, and some political leaders, and so it was a, uh, it, it, we are products of that, uh, of that period and of that environment. We were young, we were brash, we were arrogant, we believed we were right, and, uh, and, and we looked up to a lot of old people, I mean, old people, and people who were forty and fifty, and they used to be dinosaurs. Uh, the congressman, uh, Roy Ball, and Congressman Torres, and, and these old people, and the politicians like Alatore and Torres. And so we came out of that period, uh, in a hurry to make the changes that we believed in, we believed in justice, uh, but, you know, as, uh, we get older, we learn things don't happen as quickly as we want to. Uh, I appreciate the, the chronology, but there's a lot of richness to that story. It wasn't simply that, that she came in to HERE, but she came in in the middle of a strike, a very contested strike on Figueroa Boulevard. Uh, she left law school, which we, all of us were there seeking to learn about how to create justice, and she left law school, which was really difficult, to go lead this strike. She finished law school, but her, her future, her destiny was, was at HERE. And I remember at the time in law school, working at Legal Aid, that we sued HERE because they were not having meetings in the language of the members. And that was one of the, the reasons that, that Maria was so committed to creating the change, uh, that she would create at HERE. Now, there was a historic election, and that really was one of the, the, the markers of the great change of labor in the late eighties, early nineties. It was Justice for Janitors, it was HERE, it was SEIU Local 660. These were the unions that were, were creating the change, these were the unions that led the efforts against Proposition 187 and built this very broad coalition. It was the largest march for social justice in the history of this city, was the March Against Proposition 187, and that's where we saw the fusion of immigrant rights movement and workers' rights movement come together, and it was a very historic moment. I remember Jim Wood, uh, was with us, and he was wondering, what was he doing? And then he said, "Well, as long as you and Maria are there, I guess I, I'm, I'm doing what I'm supposed to do." And so it was very, very significant. Uh, of course, that's when Miguel came to Los Angeles, and, uh, you know, we all love Miguel. What a character, what a personality. Uh, one, one, uh, huge personality, and he, he finally met his match when he met you, and, uh, a few people could, uh, wrap themselves around the, the size of his, of his charm, and he was, uh, uh, a great leader, uh, in his own right. Um, I, I, I remember when we were young, Ruby and I really liked you because, uh, you always had Mari with you, and we always had Gilbert with us, and so it was kind of tough that our children had to grow up with us, uh, going to these picket lines and going to these endless meetings and going to these conferences, and it's just, you know, it was unfair. They should have been playing more baseball and more football and watching more television or doing whatever kids do. But nonetheless, I think all of them are richer for it. Uh, you know, Mikey then comes along and, uh, you know, uh, he's like... You know, Mikey then comes along and, you know, he's like, oh, I'm sorry, he's not Mikey anymore. Anyway, Ruby and I just really were mostly fond of you because of the, the obvious, open, express love you had for your children. And that was one of the things that Ruby was, was always noting in all our activities. And we always looked forward to the, the events that we would have. Thank you, Jose, for fixing that street, because it's really hard to walk down once you park up the hill on the side. You know, a lot of people have slipped, torn their pants, twisted their ankles, you know. I mean, by the time you fall down the hill, you don't want to have your taco anymore. You've got to clean yourself up, you know, with all the gravel. So thank you, Jose, for doing that. And then finally, our most recent years, because it seems odd that we are here today and closing these chapters and moving on to new ones. We've done a lot, you know, breaking with, with many to support a young, a young activist who became the president of this country and has demonstrated his leadership to commit himself to, through his executive powers, to immigration reform. Immigration is one of the central issues of the day, and it remains that because it's about the future of our nation. It's about honoring our past, recognizing our, our present, but really about how we grow our country and continue to be a nation both of laws and of immigrants. And that is the work that's before us. I applaud you for moving forward and embracing that. Count on me to continue to be at your side at any place that we need to be, because that is really, when we look at what's taking place around the world, our ability to reconcile and to bring forward immigrants into the mainstream, to integrate them and to embrace our values is really the best security and safety for the future of our nation and for our world. And so you are taking on a task that is no small task, but one that's within our reach. And so congratulations, sister. I'm so happy for you. God bless you, and I look forward to our next chapter.
Mr. Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. First of all, let me just say that Seneca and Sidney look remarkably bored right now. So let me talk to them for just a second. Your grandmother is absolutely awesome. She rocks. I know sometimes she's very busy and she can't be around. It's because she's doing a lot of work to help other people. I want to thank you both, Seneca and Sidney, for sharing your grandmother with Los Angeles for so long. And we're almost done, so you can have fun a little bit later. I was trying to think this morning, Maria Elena, when I first met you. I'm sure you don't remember it. I certainly do, because it was a big deal for me. I was a wet behind the ears new staffer to Ruth Galanter, and it was probably June of 97, and it was in Ruth's conference room. And David Koff was with you, and a bunch of environmentalists were there, I think Joe Edmiston, and someone from Jackie Goldberg's office. And we were talking about the unlikely fight to defeat a plan by a Kadja Corporation to build a golf course in the Tahunga Wash. And I didn't know much at the time, except that Ruth sent me in there and said, try to help on this one. And I got to work with you and all these amazing people, and we beat that proposal back, surprising a lot of people, overturning the planning commission and even the council member of the district's oil wax, by a vote of 10 to 4, which was pretty cool. It was one of the first times I had ever seen the blue-green coalition at work, something that later really became, you know, the big muscle in progressive politics here in Los Angeles. Now Kadja later sued the city and the council sadly and somewhat predictably caved very quickly, and I don't even know if the golf course ever got built. I remember distinctly your passion and your energy and being in the presence of this, this incredible legend. And over the years, I've had an opportunity to work very often with you on the same side, occasionally, like the LAX North Runway on the other side. Occasionally on things we've agreed on, we have maybe quibbled on timing or details. But the thing I remember most about everything that we've done together is that you were in it for the bigger picture, that every battle was just part of a bigger fight. And when we were done with one issue, there was a broader struggle to, to continue with. You're a labor leader for sure, but that's not how I think of you. You're a rabble-rouser for sure, but that's not how I think of you. You're a great strategist, but that's not how I think of you. I think of you as a, a champion of progressive values overall and as a warrior for social justice. Whether it's the LGBT community that Ron referred to, or the immigrant community that Mr. Sedia referred to, or anybody who is in distress or voiceless or disempowered, you have been an incredible champion for them. And it's been an inspiration to watch and to work with you. I had hoped that we'd be working together in your previous capacity for a very long time. I'll be working with Rusty, but I'm looking forward to working with you in your new one. Because in whatever you do, I've found that your, your voice is strong, your heart is true, and the course that you point out is absolutely correct. So for everything that you've done and you're going to do, let me say thank you. And let me also say, pun intended, here, here.
Mr. Moonbeam Field.
Thank you, Mr. President. Wanted to add my voice, voice to the chorus, and although I haven't known you as long as some of these folks here, we're talking about 30 years, but when I think back a bit, I've probably known you for 15 years, you know, or more, which is quite a long time. And, you know, I think about, you know, gotten to know you for, for years, worked for Howard Berman on some of the farm worker issues and some of the, sort of the big national issues, and then on the state level, and whether it's been stadiums or rallies or labor issues, you've really been in the mix on everything. But I, I think about the first time that you and I really sat down outside of, when I worked for Howard and we worked, worked together, sort of where he was always there, that you and I had our first meeting when I was thinking of running for the State Assembly. And I remember that you, you know, you were talking about what makes a good legislator. And one of the things you said is, it's not just about being a, a good vote on issues, it's about being a warrior for working people. And, and you went on to try to talk about that. And what I realized is you were really describing in many ways yourself, which is a, a good thing and a model to emulate, is that you have been a warrior for working people. And, and when you talk about elected officials who you support and you like, you like those who are also warriors for, for working people. And it's, it's really is, it speaks to the fact that for you, and, and for many of us, this isn't just about a job. This is about a passion. And you are so passionate, and that's what makes you so effective, because you care, you make a difference. You're all the things that, that my colleagues talked about in terms of being strategic and smart and able to, to see the bigger picture and make things happen. But the real reason and the tenacity, but the real reason that you've been so effective and that you continue to be so effective is, is the passion that's in your heart, which, which I find inspirational. And I'm grateful for the time that we've been able to work together and getting to know you. You've helped me grow as a, as a legislator, as a person, and I just wish you all the best, and, and I know you're going to take Washington by storm. So thank you for all you've done and all you will be doing.
Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to join in the, the chorus of congratulations. You know, certainly the majority of working people in my district have benefited from the programs, the policies, the issues, concerns that you have raised. And so on their behalf, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for being a real shining light, a real source of inspiration, and a real indication of what's possible. Cici Fuente, thank you.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I actually want to talk about something a little bit different. Can I, can I also recall the time my husband and I first met Maria Elena, over a decade ago, working in the San Fernando Valley? But I want to talk about something a little bit different, something that I've seen over the last couple of years in working with Maria Elena, is the fact that you have recognized that it's important to mentor and bring together the new generation, the younger generation of women leaders in the city. And something that is very special to me is the fact that you've brought together people like our good friend Mayor Asia Brown from Compton, women like Courtney Pugh, who was not too long ago leading SEIU 99, people like Yvette Martinez, who is a dear friend of mine, people like Apriese Maddox, who's in this council chambers as well, that works for our city attorney, our Attorney General Kamala Harris. You've done a very, very amazing thing among, among women in the city, and it's recognizing the fact that we have a voice and that it's important to get us all together to talk about the different work that we are doing, and recognizing that we need to lead, and we need to lead across the city and across the state. And so I appreciate the fact that you've done that. Another two important women that I've worked with you, Mary Gutierrez, Sandra Carranza, who's a great friend, all these amazing women that all have lent their support to you and all the work that we've done in the city, but most importantly, the fact that we are all somehow connected and that you've recognized that these leaders and these women, in their own right, are doing amazing things. So thank you so much for doing that.
Thank you. Mr. Fuentes.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Rusty, what have you done? How do you even follow this act? I mean, you know, the, the institution that has been built in really Los Angeles, California, I'd say the Western United States, is a really long tail of success. And I think, you know, just joshing a little bit here, you know, the fact that Maria Elena has endorsed you to follow speaks volumes as to what it is that is expected and certainly what it is that you're capable of. So I'm, I'm excited about your leadership. And I think, Mr. Fury, you're absolutely correct. There is absolutely, you know, this chapter on what Maria Elena has been able to do, I think is far from done, and it's really exciting to have been in the universe of some of the things that have taken place and the successes for working families really in California. And so I'm excited to hear about and read about what happens next. And so rather than speak like my colleagues did about sort of all the tremendous thing you did, have done in your capacity, I just want to impress upon you how much I've, I've admired and observed a couple of things that you do that I try to emulate every single day, and it might come as a surprise to you. But, you know, I, I think the tenacity and the fierceness that you bring and you, you hold people of power to account, I, I really admire that. And, and I think Mr. Coretts, myself, others can attest to, that we don't want to draw the ire of, of Maria Elena Durazo. I, I have walked away from meetings thinking, oh, gosh, I've disappointed her. And it hasn't been often, but it's something that none of us want to do. But your, your tenacity in making sure that we're all doing the best that we're supposed to do, I think is really tremendous, and I find myself holding decision-makers and people of power to the same accountability. And, and whether I knew it or not, it's because you've done it to us. But the thing that I think really I admire an awful lot, whether it's when I see you with your grandchildren or your family, it's how you have absolutely defined the word "service" to me. It's not, it's fun to sort of watch you wiggle and dance around a little bit, because today is not about the movement as much as it is about you. And that's, I think, a little uncomfortable from my perspective, because you don't go and do this for you. You're not a politician. It's not about Maria Elena Durazo, it's about the people that you serve. And each and every day, I try to do the same thing that you do, take the time to be with your people. The service that we're providing, the, the servitude that we owe, the dignity that comes with a job well done, I think is what defines who you are. And to me, that is a tremendous example of what it is that Los Angeles, the county, the state, and the country needs to get to. But today is about you. And it's been tremendous to just say that I've been in a meeting or in a hearing or in a conversation with you. Mr. Bonin, I can't remember the first time that I met you, but I can remember the substantive, significant conversations that we've had about the future. And to me, that is probably, in my opinion, more important, because we do have to hold this institution, everybody that follows us, to account. And how we do that, hopefully we won't differ, hopefully we'll be on the same page. But it's that tension that makes for a better decision, in my opinion. And so I just simply want to say thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Coretts, I wanted to rise for Maria Elena. I'm glad your grandchildren are back here right now, because the biggest fight that, that you helped me on was to keep our zoo, the zoo that we have. And I'm forever grateful for that. And also the thing I love about you, if I'm a big family, I'm from a big family. And there's nothing like big families, because we learn from our brothers and sisters. So I salute your brothers and sisters and your parents and all what they've done to help create the power that you are. And as Mr. Fuentes said so eloquently, the wings that they fly under is you are an angel in the city of angels. Thank you very much.
And, Mr. President, I think we would like to have Maria Elena speak a little bit as well.
Good morning. Thank you all. I have been before you many times, usually asking you to vote a certain way, to take a position in a certain way. And I'm grateful, because without a doubt, every single time there's been an issue that affects working men and women, you've taken the right position. So I come here to thank you for being bold, for being courageous, and I ask you to continue to do that in every decision that comes before you. There's a lot of talk about income inequality in this nation. There's a lot of talk about, we need to do something about it. But very few cities are actually doing something about it. Very few elected officials are actually doing something about it. You've got to continue to be bold, courageous, take risks, and really, really fight for people who work hard every single day. They deserve it. They deserve to get more for their families. And so I come here to thank you, to urge you to continue to do more of what you've done, and remember the men and women. It's not their work that makes, you know, some menial or not. They need to be treated with far more respect than what they usually get treated. And whether it is, in my capacity at the LA Federation, whether it was learning what a firefighter does, or what a sanitation worker does, or what a laborer, an electrician does, I've learned to respect more what it is that we should be grateful to working men and women every day. So you'll see me here in the future. I'll come, whether it's about the minimum wage increase that needs to be approved here in the city of Los Angeles. Be bold, be strong about that. Whether it's about making this city a model city under the president's executive order on implementing the new temporary legal status for millions of men and women. This city's got to open its arms and say, immigration is not a side issue, it is a community issue, it's something that all of us should care about. Whether it's about civil rights and our African-American communities, our Latino communities, all of the issues, all of these will make Los Angeles and have made Los Angeles a true model, a place that throughout the country is highly respected. And so keep on doing most of what you're doing, keep on working hard, be bold, be courageous. The hardest, the, the best decision is the hardest decision. The best decision for Los Angeles will be the hardest decision that you have to make. So keep on, keep on the good work. And I too thank my family very much, Mario, Michael, Alessandra, and my grandkids, all my friends, and especially the union leaders in Los Angeles who work so hard every day and fight so much for the men and women that they represent. And we are going to win the World Series this year. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Coretts.
And now it's our honor to present this proclamation to Maria Elena Durazo for her outstanding and amazing leadership and career to date, and wishing her well and her future career with Unite Here.
Thank you. All right.
I was thinking, we could have an easter egg.
And have a union framework, that's what I want.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coretts. A man of clerk... Thank you very much, Mr. Coretts. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Item four, call special for cards.
Item four, we're going to have special for cards. Mr. Walsh. Mr. Walsh, you'll be just a moment, please. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or tweeting at Hollywood Dems, or blogging also at JWalshConfidential for identification purposes. These, again, are REAP programs. Batman has been working, he'll be here a little later, out of a uniform. These are REAP violation. And you're doing a good job. When you do a good job, I say you do a good job. And as far as keeping the units habitable and answering complaints, I've been in the same unit since 1976 and never had the slightest problem with the city in making sure that the landlord kept it up to code. So, you do a very good job of that. And I'd just like to point out, when I drop dead, please, my last wish, don't honor me here. Thank you. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Herman, please.
Well, great presentation. That lasted well over an hour. But, the conditions of Mr. Kern Price and Mr. Parks, whose availability here today is absent, to speak about the conditions of citations related to them here under item CDB, CD8, CD9. However, the point is this. The city is doing a good job maintaining that many of us can live in our homes habit-free of all the bads and the goods and the negatives of what our bad landlords do to us. And don't forget, and all you know this, the City of Los Angeles has become the worst navigator of a landlord. Look what happened down the street at the Da Vinci. Thank you. One minute.
That completes the item. No speakers on the cue. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Next item.
Mr. President, that brings counsel to general public comment.
Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org. I'd like to thank the Olympic Committee for turning down L.A. The city is out of control. They realized it was out of control and they picked Boston. Again, another, stay out of downtown L.A.? You want to turn the Da Vinci into a parking lot? Yeah, why don't we turn, that's what Labonge wants. Why don't we turn all downtown into a parking lot? Now, come to my website because I have the picture on my website, the cartoon that caused all those 12 people in Paris, those cartoonists, to be murdered. Now, no one else except Hebdo, except has the picture. And this is a picture on my website of a cartoon. I think it's blasphemous. You may decide. Go to JWalshConfidential.com and you will see the cartoon of the Prophet Muhammad sodomizing somebody. HollywoodHighland.org. Go to it.
Mr. Herman.
Folks, here I am, live again in Los Angeles. And we all are aware and know the fact that Mr. Labonge plans to build out of a burned building, a parking lot. Why not provide all your citizens here?
Mr. President, he should speak to the body.
Speak to the microphone. Don't turn around.
I am speaking regarding the issue of the Da Vinci. Let the taxpayers decide how we plan to use the blighted area of that burned-down building that you, the city, didn't take any control of the matter. It burned in a matter of minutes. That's the reason why we do not have the Olympics here, Mr. Labonge. And good thing for my decision for the Special Olympics that we will all enjoy and have here in the City of Los Angeles. So, in my closing arguments to all of you, I say this. Vote no for Mr. Weezer. Vote no for Mr. Kocorian.
Hi, Gil.
And vote for Eric Pre-
Omar Baldwin.
Hello. Hello. My name is Omar Baldwin. I'm on the Legislative Committee with the Peace and Freedom Party. I'm the vice chair of the Peace and Freedom Party in Los Angeles County. And peace is all nations coming together on one accord with one political agenda. And I'm currently working with Israel, with the United Nations, to write a peace treaty. And they're waiting for my email, but I haven't sent them the email yet. And peace can be bought. The plan is to, right now, currently, the plan is to buy a town and gain sovereignty and set up a peace democracy, which will be a currency-free democracy. And if I'm the only person to buy a town, then I will be in my peace democracy by myself. And I'm looking, I'm fundraising to buy a town currently and to work with the United Nations to get sovereignty. And whoever wants to come can come. And what we're going to do is probably going to expand. And we're going to work with a lot of nations. And everyone's welcome.
Thank you. That completes public comment. Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, a special one motion has been circulated. The city attorney will speak to the findings.
Special one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. The Housing Department staff has notified council staff that the owner of a multifamily residential property at 205 South Mission Road has failed to comply with a notice to vacate issued by the Fire Department due to code violations. Due to the council recess, council was unable to introduce a motion to approve advancement of relocation benefits greater than $100,000. Immediate action is required to assist the tenants as soon as possible to find new housing due to the impending date to vacate the property. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
So, that's on that. Findings. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, I have one card. Mr. Walsh, do you have a card as well? Mr. Herman? Did you turn a card in, Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Please come to the speaker's forum.
I call out to all of you to come to the City of Los Angeles, hold argument to your lean, and question it.
He is not talking about this item.
What item are we on?
Absolutely. This is the special, sir. It's posted.
Right, right. Special. Special motion number one. In regards to special number one, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. O'Connell, am I on topic now on the special? I just want to clarify whether I'm on the special or not. Mr. O'Connell, City Attorney.
Just speak to the issue. He'll interrupt you if you don't speak to the issue.
He is not talking about the relocation benefits matter.
In regards to relocation matters and platters and batters hypothetically, indirectly, objectively, and incorrectly, riddle me do, riddle me duh.
All right. Have a nice weekend. John Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, tweeting at Hollywood Dems, and blogging also at JWalshConfidential. You know, it's pretty hard, Mr. City Attorney, to speak to the item when it is not printed. How are we supposed to speak to an item that you sneak onto the end of the agenda? It's not printed on the agenda. Now, this is only $100,000. I just want you to know. And this is relocation. I don't know if it's crooked or not. I know that it's being pushed through here and there's no written record of what's happening. Now, they do this a number of times. They play this game of sneaking an agenda item in here that's never under emergency. There are a lot of emergencies in this city when a building blows up in 10 seconds in downtown. But, this is not one of the emergencies. This order is not an emergency. This city's in trouble. But, there's no emergency in this room. HollywoodHighlands.org.
For clarification, Mr. City Attorney, I thank you for that statement beginning, the need to act is now. Madam Clerk, no speakers on the cue. Open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Fourth with. Next item.
Counsel has motions for post and a referral.
So ordered.
That clears the desk.
Announcements, members, announcements. We have any announcements this weekend. It's another great weekend in Los Angeles. Be involved. Visit your local public libraries in your parks and enjoy announcements.
Tomorrow morning, the mayor and I will be going door-to-door in Mar Vista in order to promote the Great Streets Initiative and the selection of Venice Boulevard in Mar Vista as one of the great streets. We'll be going door-to-door with several hundred volunteers canvassing people and surveying them about what they want to see in the Great Street in advance of a big Great Streets workshop we'll be having on January 25th. We're meeting tomorrow at 9:30 a.m. at Fire Station 62 at Venice and Inglewood. And more volunteers are welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. Very good. Julie, thank you very much. Mr. Bonin, you and the mayor have a good walk. And that, any other announcements before we go to adjourned motions? Julie won the very special prize of lunch at Felipe's for answering the correct answer about this date in history. Thank you very much. Now, rise for adjourned motions, please. And adjourned motions, Mr. Fuentez.
Labonge, Andre Edward Crouch was born in Los Angeles on July 1st, 1942. He was the son of preacher Benjamin Crouch and his wife Catherine. Andre Crouch was a longtime resident of Pacoima, but many of you all will know him as a Grammy Award-winning gospel singer. Mr. Crouch did something that was remarkable in sort of spreading the gospel, spreading the word. He really sort of modernized what it was to sing gospel. As a result, he had a lot of sort of concern by some of the congregants that attended the church, but he had overwhelming success in doing that. He collaborated with such icons as Michael Jackson, Quincy Jones, Diana Ross, Elton John, and Madonna. Pastor Crouch sometimes has been referred to as the father of modern gospel music. And he was more than effective. He was really, in my opinion, a real prodigy. When his father was contemplating whether he should be a full-time pastor in Pacoima with a congregation, he said he would leave it to God and to see how talented his son could be to aid in this. Because at the time when they started this, they started it in a garage. And sure enough, Andre Crouch picked up the piano and played it flawlessly. And that was at the age of 11. He would later play at the White House, at the Grand Ole Opry, some of Billy Graham's enormous rallies. NPR's Farney Kelly reports. He played everywhere and he was magnificent. Pastor Crouch, as I mentioned, was a longtime resident of the northeast San Fernando Valley. Never forgot where home is, and it will always be home for him and for all of us. We're going to miss him dearly. He is survived by his twin sister Sandra, who resides in Pacoima. I'd like to adjourn in his memory.
Very special man. Thank you so much. And it was nice to see his recognition. And also, in his recognition, it saw him receiving a star on the Walk of Fame. And next to him was Johnny Grant. And it was this day years ago that Johnny Grant passed on. So, there's a way it all works. Very special. Mr. Bonin.
President, colleagues, I want to adjourn today in memory of Al Delugic, who is the father of someone many of us know, Sharon Delugic, who worked for Steve Zimmer and before that was chief of staff for a number of years here to Jackie Goldberg. Al was what the newspaper business refers to as a rewrite man, which is a particular skill and talent in newspapering to take and compile and rewrite on tight deadlines, all the information coming in from various people. He was particularly skilled at that. He had a great newspaper career in St. Louis, where he wrote for the Post-Dispatch, and was part of a team that won the Pulitzer Prize covering corruption in labor movement. After he left St. Louis, he moved to Los Angeles, where he worked for 19 years for the Los Angeles Times. There, he won the prestigious Gerald Loeb Award in 1984 for his news coverage. In addition to Sharon, he leaves his wife Bernice, daughter Joey, his son Dan, and a daughter-in-law, Catherine. His son David died of cancer in 1998 and predeceased him. Sharon posted on Facebook the other day a quick story about her dad, saying that she thought it epitomized what he was like. She said when she was in high school, her junior high school, actually, her principal called her father in to talk about Sharon having a discipline problem because she refused to greet her homeroom teacher properly and some other stuff. Sharon said that her father, in front of the principal, put his arm around her and said to the principal, "Stop trying to break her spirit." May he rest in peace and walk forever in the sunlight of the spirit.
And may I add to that, because I was going to talk about Al Delugic, who lived in the district that I represent. But, more importantly, he and his wife Bibi used to hike all the time in Griffith Park with their dogs. And he was a wonderful, loving man. And we all know Sharon, but what a gentle man who really caught feel. And just recently, as in the last few months, I would see him walk. And I always would, over the years, yell in his neighborhood, "Hey, Al!" And I quit doing that because I didn't want to disturb him in his solitude as he kept his fight up. He was a veteran of World War II, and he was a tremendous guy. And he lived a wonderful life and made a great impact. Al Delugic, I want to join with you on that, Mr. Bonin. Also, members, I ask for adjourned in memory of Ally Sherman, a great coach of the New York Giants in the formative years of the NFL. Tremendous individual. We want to remember Ally Sherman. And then, John Bowser, here in Los Angeles, passed away far too early. He was the very prominent local art figure who was responsible for the Chris Burton Urban Lights Project, right there in front of Lakewood. Worked for many years with Lakewood. He died at this young age of 62 after a two-year battle with lung cancer here in our district. He's survived by his mother and his brother and his daughter. And we will remember John Bowser as he also did something, as he put the touch on what is the greatest corner, I think, almost in the city right now at Ogden and Wilshire, where urban lights are, where the whole city comes in the evening to enjoy the beauty of that Chris Burton art piece of all the old streetlights. Members, any more adjourned motions?
Yeah.
Mr. Blumentfeld, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Thank you. I want to adjourn today in the memory of Dick Edelman, who passed away over the break on November 28th, 2014. Just this past Wednesday, his son, Paul, was here in these chambers for the appointment of his wife, Dash Stolars, to the Rent Control Adjustment Commission. And I've worked with Dick's son, Paul, for many years when I was at the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. We had a lot in common. Both our fathers were psychiatrists in the service. His father was in the Army, mine in the Air Force. Dick himself was born on 1924, and he led quite the life. He grew up in Chicago, graduated from the University of Chicago Medical School, took the psychiatric residency in Ann Arbor, Michigan, where he met and married his wife, Anne. He served in the Army as a division psychiatrist in Germany. When his service was over, he and his wife moved to Syracuse, where he taught medical school, had a private practice. He made his way to Los Angeles. He was invited to join the faculty at USC, which allowed him to get the training as a psychoanalyst at the Los Angeles Institute. He spent many years as a compassionate and caring therapist- He spent many years as a compassionate and caring therapist and a training analyst. He was basically a Freudian. He had an active and curious mind. He was always interested in exploring other theories. He was particularly taken with the ideas of Wilford Bayon. He loved his children, grandchildren, and truly enjoyed life. He and his wife Anne and their family, they loved to travel. They took numerous trips to far-off places, including trekking in Peru and Nepal, camping with their children in Africa. Never to be down for long, he's someone who, after a stroke during his 80s, he immediately signed up for a trip to Antarctica. And he was determined to go there before he became too infirm. In fact, one of his most impressive accomplishments occurred when he took a year off in 1986 to walk from Los Angeles to Washington, D.C. with the Great Peace March for Nuclear Disarmament. I said "walk," yes. He had so many passions. He was playing tennis, skiing, backgammon, a voracious reader, an active member of the Skeptic Society. He died peacefully after a long illness. He's survived by his wife Anne, daughter Eleanor, her husband and son Paul, their wife, his wife Dash, plus grandchildren Carsten, Brennan, Marley, Chet, and Holly. May he rest in peace.
So that's sad, we rest in peace in that. Members, this completes this day of service to Los Angeles on the council. We welcome the children who now come and visit the John Farrow Chambers. Thank you very, very much. And before we turn it off, let's hear from our Angelina, and tell us what school this is.
Homeschool.
Homeschool, okay. Come to the microphone real quick.